Dumela Oh, sitay, namaste Di kumbasi kale
I think now we can start?
It is now quarter past eleven
Quarter past eleven, Ogo, klasa?
So I think we must start those who are still joining us Buzas fumana gendle
Those who are still joining us will find us halfway
Sef Mela
Do you agree?
Okay, let me check, which language do you speak?
Ni tete olpo lewi mi
Is closer? Africans! Africans?
Africans?
No Africans! Oh, oh English? Ni ranga English Ni ranga English Ni ranga English Ni ranga English Ni ranga is close Ni ranga is closer, ni English Ni Africans Isi zulu Ah, bela si zue na Di buzangis close upa kame si sana Di tizulu pa kame si sana food Di tizuvena pa kame si sana So you are Usteta zone Oh, okay, that's fine I think we must start
Singa kalisa again
We have the interpreters bazos neta With all the languages
We do have interpreters, they will help us with all the languages
Di ngumkosa again
I am closer
Ti nguchawe
Chawe klen
Di ngumkaan
Also a king
Gata ni yazled Ani omakosa gata Di ngumtange kachiwi Niandi famosi But my surname is Mudise
If finally I am ngumtise
Di ngumtange kachiwi wase kool Ah, niza uchonagum Niza uchonagum Diakok? Chiin tisa Chiin itisa, okay My name is Ntibimudise
Ikamala Moutibimudise
I am a member of parliament
Di lelongo leparament
I am the chairperson of the portfolio committee of forestry, fisheries and environment
Di ngusihlalo wey committee portfolio Weza mahlati, zo globa Kuniye nendale si ngongileyo
Okay, Mela Kawi pinda mja
Di ngusilano weza mahlati, ezolimo Nendale si ngongileyo
Di tanda paga ngongo
Ngongileyo
Right So ndime ndiza uni, ambisela lo msebenzi namshaj
So I'll be doing the, I'll be in charge of the proceedings today?
Ni ranga lont Na problem, na complexi niyamos Andu fani abane
I'm not like the rest
Huh?
I'm not like the rest
Alright Before we start, can I request that we all rise? And gentlemen, please remove your heads and we sing the national anthem (Singing) Oh si si deleli Africa Maluka ha Ezeu ponno layo Izwa yini chanaso yetu Oh si si delela China Nusa ponno layo Ude la buluka si chabasa Ezeu Ute di se nijwali masweke Usi buluke Usi buluke si chabasa Ezeu si chabasa South Africa South Africa Eti koo van ose yira Eti tike van ose yira Koo si irbe fegebeke Aki kase akori Tanso kote kama together And united we shall stand Let us live as life of freedom In South Africa Our land Thank you very much
Si ne bolela kakulo
I want to thank you for availing yourself on a Sunday morning
Mandi ngulele obane na fumane kange nsa si yenge tawa
For this invite, ine de abane because Baba Legile uwi ekaway
Some have benefited because they were not gonna go to church
Well, they ran away from going to church
And they ran away from going to church, Baba Legile ekaway
So my kobe, my kwa jere parliament, mpele ni ba kobe
Please give a round of applause
Give a round of applause to members of parliament for inviting you to a meeting instead Because anyway you were not going to church
Ni ba kobe disa, ni ba bengasu ya kagate ekaway
Yeah, now we can see who was going to church, ubane bengasu ya
Siambone bezavi ekaway no bengasu ya
Yeah Andi ndi ababo Andi ndi ababo
I look this side, I don't see them, I look at the other side, I see them
Yes And has no good, kani invite wa gutu ine yapi
When you were invited, did they tell you where you're going?
Ban kale What did they say?
Batini, tabi nkalet
Umme yaya chat
Did they say the mayor is getting married?
Bajil? Oh, alright Welcome to the wedding of the mayor
Namgele kale mchatu ini kaso dolop
I am the program director of the mayor's wedding
Ndiumge wemsi paya mchatu ini kaso dolop
But this is not our meeting
Ayo yetu kale ntsanga niso
It's your meeting We are here to consult you on climate change
Saka si fakane milomo nani, wo chincho kumo zulu
We are in a quest, this is our third day in the Eastern Cape
Lusukle startu olue tu namshanjee mboma koloni si ambasi fakane milomo
We started in Mata Dielle on Friday
Kolishani skale Mata Dielle
Yesterday we were in Danzani
Ezolo besem Ezolo besem Danzani?
Epafalo City Today we are in Sunday's River Municipality, in Kaka Tu District
Namshanjee si Sunday's River District Municipality, Ki Kaka Tu
It's now Sarabatman
Sarabatman
Kiya chambi, eje yami niza ivaa apa ne
You can pick up my age from my speech
Thank you bela, ki Kaka Tu
Last time I checked, it was Kaka Tu
But now we are told it's Sarabatman
Ogo kutwa isarabatman
This is a process that we started in Mpumalanga
Si kalem Mpumalanga ke yonge le ngumbo
We went to Limbobo
Saye Limbobo
We went to Kwazulu Natal
Saye Kwazulu Natal
We went to Houting We've been to the northwest
Si yele na ku northwest
Now we are in the Eastern Cape
Ogo si sengoma koloni
From here, we'll be going to the Free State
Kasuka pasi Free State
From the Free State, we'll be going to Northern Cape
Kasuka paya nasa mntla koloni
And then conclude our consultative processes in the Western Cape
Si kubumbeleke yonge le ndofakane milomo kunchona koloni
And I must confess, the reception we have been given by the people of South Africa is quite overwhelming
Mandi ilkope litsole lokbaninge le samke wengayonga bandu basemzans Africa is cheers bambo ngesants
To a larger extent, they are raising issues that are not climate change related
Okulbe talageba paga msimi bande lenge na tana nino chincho be mo zulu
They speak about water and electricity
Baza tetba tetangombeane namansi
Well, some speak about food parcels
Bakona batetaya na ngoku ucha ke pisayo
Some speak about bridges
Abane batetenge bloho
Abane batetenge michato
Others talk about weddings
But because we are a committee that listens
Kuba ketina si ngaba puli, ikomite pulapulayo
So we listen to everybody
Sima melebo nke
We have concluded a process of consultation
Si yesa kumbela mbande la woku fakane milomo
On National Felt and Fire Forest Amendment Bill
Kumteto wshengasengiso, lokucha no chiso kama mahlati
So we are now back because of climate change
Si lapake ngongo chincho le mo zulu
The reason why we're doing all of this is because we don't want to stay in Cape Town And make laws that affect the people of Addo without consulting the people of Addo
Si saswasenza yonge le ndos, funushala ngapika apa Si nzisgri bo ngesin, ndesita pasela ban basi addo Si nga kanye si fakane milomo nabwa ban basi addo
So isha ngenata nyani, nduba nitele na tu ban basi addo
It will be more helpful to talk to us
Nisalelu ba ini afektanjani, climate change
Tell us how climate change affects you
We are here to talk to you about the high, uchiso kuku pumelele, am I right?
We are here to talk about the high temperatures, very high temperatures
Yeah, kuti ngastos Uchiso kuna man
Uka temtwe
Uka temtwe, yeah Si lapas to tetangoku chisa uka temtwe
Umtwe ini, mande lai, umta
Oh umta Aye, uka temtwe Aye, kaloka ni ngichau Ni, ni njvilemos Andi kaka lisige
I've been started yet, just wait.
Di, ni, ni zowa right, nginga wat. Right. So we're here to talk about the rising sea levels.
Sate tana ngoku niu kakomtama we loanjee.
I saw one research that says by 2050 eh, there's high possibility that Amanzi azoba half of Table Mountain.
Di kenda fundeni ndo epandwa, eh, dipangwa 2050, Amanzoluanjee will be par, half of my, Table Mountain, the height.
I'm just giving you high, high level.
Di, ni kage ulanzingali paka mileyo.
Ba ku, kuwi.
Things are not good at all.
Now, we have options to fix the climate.
Si noketo, kubasi lungi se imeko yesulu.
Preserve it for ourselves and for future generations.
Si lo ndolose, wkwenzela tina, nesogulo nesizayo.
Tina ge abake tuwe, we are forced by the constitution.
Si nyanzelango mka kosiseko tina kebake tuwe.
To do this in terms of section 24 of the constitution.
Si enze wkwetandelo 24 lo mka kosiseko.
That we must create an environment that is not harmful to the people of South Africa.
Masbe nimeko buumeenge yongo si kubantu basemzans Africa.
Goku umeleni isn't right.
Then you got to help us.
Sison nethan.
Are you going to help us?
Good. Eh, I want to take this opportunity to introduce this team that I'm with.
Mandateltu ba kendi ntsase lenge kala ndiambanalo.
Oh, before I do that.
Kapamba ndesenzaloo.
You are on TV.
Ni za velle TV.
You, you might need to smile.
Kuzafneka ni nume.
Ma, ma, ma banu ma ban.
You better smile.
You can't appear on TV ukuwi.
Oh, na velle TV ni without a smile.
Kauwa, kauwa kuba tumelele i WhatsApp paika, you tima bakchonge ku 408.
You can send them a WhatsApp and say they must look for you at channel 408.
They must also see you on YouTube and Twitter and WhatsApp.
Bakchonge ku YouTube, Twitter and WhatsApp.
Because we also brought TV to you.
It TV ze kuni ngoku.
Yeah, ndubali ni kangeli TV paipa, ipenili ze kuni.
You don't have to look around for TV in, in Ka Becha, TV is right here.
Ma banu ma ban.
Better smile.
Right. On my far left is Honorable Zamini.
Na se kochlo kwam, kobegekileyo ulzamini.
Honorable Zamini is a member of parliament, a member of this committee, and he hails from Haunting.
Obegekileyo Zamini lilungulale committee, kwaye ukokeela ulilungule paramente ukokeela esha Haunting.
And next to me is Honorable Mbata.
Talen kwam, kobegekileyo Mbata.
Honorable Mbata is also a member of parliament and a member of this committee, and she also comes from Haunting.
Na yeh, obegekileyo Mbata ulilungulale committee, kwalilungule paramente, kwaye na velle Haunting, Haunting.
And then you have me.
Benhimge ngoku.
Gati nenmaki galon.
Seem to have a problem with that?
Gongmaki.
You don't have a problem?
You don't.
What's the problem?
This task. Besen chilo nje. Di ngutibimudise.
Am Tivimudise.
Di nguchawe.
A chawe clan.
Di umtange kachiwi. Di kumka. Nis, nivunando oligati. Do you know the gentleman next to me?
Ni amazi, omno mza ndolala.
Ni amazi.
Do you know him?
Okay, then I don't need to introduce him. Oh, oh, ningali, ningali, ningali. Next to him is Honorable Kapa, oh, aye. Sisi, oh, di teu se TV, bakchonge ilaband.
People are looking at you on TV.
Suwezi mikuba. Next to him, this is the, is Honorable Kapa.
Ekalkwai ke kobegekileyo tapa.
Honorable Kapa.
Obegekileyo tapa.
Uti ni chafiye.
He says you look so weak.
Eh, Honorable Kapa is also a member of this committee, he hails from the Eastern Cape.
Na yeh, obegekileyo tapa ulilungulale committee, kokeela yana esha mpuma kapa.
Eh, next to him is Honorable Mkhulu.
Talen kwakhe kobegekileyo Mkhulu.
Tenavu melapesu, ni amazi.
Do you know her?
And ifu nikelentunisa. Kuni nditeta apa ninga, ninga muminam.
I've been speaking here, there was no smile.
Niya nu momo.
Now, when this Mkhulu there, you smile. These are some tricks, I don't like these tricks.
The gentleman on the right, do you know him?
Ni amazi, utetelunga apaya?
Kani ni. Huh? Animal. Ni amazi. Do you know him? You don't know him? You don't know him to know him? Or you know him not to know him? Aye. He's not very important, let me not introduce him. Or you have interest there? Sisi, when you have interest.
Ikun ndonomla kwayo sisi paha kwa.
Ngatu, you have interest.
Ngatu nomla ana paha.
Eh, speaker. Nyansene wauti vanana sisi. Andi zela ngutlala, binduenkulu nzo yenza. Na ochati isapa. Belidchilu ba ndize, ndinise, mchateni kameya. Andi kamefumaneli mntundisa kangelela imama chok. Makani nyewe. Right. Eh, and the reason why I'm not introducing the gentleman next to me is because you know him, and the gentleman on the far right, you should be knowing him. Eh, this is Councillor Khune.
Lengutwai ba Khune.
He's the executive mayor of Sandis River Municipality.
Kusotolopi we Sandis River Municipality.
And that is Councillor Notonti.
Nga payana ibengo Councillor Notonti.
He is the speaker of Sandis River Municipality.
Ungosomlomo we Sandis River Municipality.
So, I'm going to invite the mayor.
Isamemo soto lopuke ngoku.
Baba, astalelu ba injasbo chiwe na.
To, to tell us that the dogs are lished.
Yes. Today is Sunday, please let there be peace. Interpreters, please, today let there be peace. Can we repeat that part?
He's going to inform us that the dogs have been lished.
Good. Well, I think there's a problem in saying this thing in English. Eh, please tell us that the dogs have been lished. You, you must say, dogs unleashed or unleashed.
There are no dogs.
Imensashai. Right, now, and ifu nufi, sifika apa sisa nze lenje, and it.
So we just not going to do as we please, yeah?
Protocol dictates that we must be welcomed.
Kufuneka samke elo.
Eh, stalelu ba injasbo chiwe.
And be told that the dogs are lished.
Stalelu ba injasbo chiwe.
The dogs are unleashed, unleashed. Si bochiwe, si bochelelu.
But before we, before we invite the mayor, we have a team of eh, parliament staff.
Kapamba si meme, usoto lopu, sineka yela lasepalamente labasebenzi.
Eh, from interpreters.
Edenyeliveela kuba kutuleli.
Na lopu du nitati ztohmbi.
Na lutati ztohmbi.
People of media.
Na bezendaba, no, beleloano.
Eh, the protector, protection services.
Na bezokuselego.
Navaba, wuorganiza eh, university issues.
Na babachonge nene zisusuzeitu.
And if, including those who are in transport for us.
Na babandukuselele istuti.
So we are many. We are many.
Sbanins.
So if I was to introduce them one by one, it will take the whole day, Executive Mayor.
Be kwa usasoto lopu ndibakas, babenga babesa ngabanyi ngabanyi.
So I'm going to request all of them to just rise with a smile because they're also on TV, and say hi.
Saela bapakame, banu umengo banabo basi TV ini.
Na ba van, na ba van. Na ba vani mufa. Ni, ni ngahamba kaku shenichonge.
Some are there at the back and you might win, so look carefully.
I did not say they might win. Di teba ngahamba kaku shen.
Amba kaku is going home or?
Eh, no, bangaamba kaku shen. Waba wamba payapi, unga ngene nda, bangaamba kaku shen. Executive Mayor, over to you.
Eh, masbulaleke stalo.
Thank you, Chairman.
Lenoka chawe sagesi ponanonge.
We will examine this chawe thing.
Eh, etalo bande is thakaze, lesfundo we pepe.
My first time seeing clan names being read from the paper.
Stalo eh, pamba ndikubenama ndichindobana, ndiyama kunye nekiza, Lomaspala wasa Sandis River Municipality.
Chairman, before I continue, I must say that I am with the, the committee from the municipality.
Ne, ndiyama ne councillors kunye ne administrationi tukeke la ngomunispa manage.
Usoto lopu wabo kua kunye no, no sopala wabo okokeela eh, administration.
Saktela eh, team savie m, nipakamence ngonge nibulis.
I will ask my team savie to just stand up and greet.
Siabulela.
Thank you.
Stalo manis bulisele kuwe eh, geskeke lo sa ko, kule committee.
Let me greet you Chairman for, for, for the, the program that you are doing in this committee.
Bulisamalunga begekileyo eh, nduwi somteto kuzelonke.
I greet the honorable eh, eh, the honorable members of the legislature from the whole world.
Bulisakteba no somlomo abakoyo.
I greet the, the speaker and the mayor that are here.
Utreba ngoku councillor.
Councillor, yes, the councillor.
Di bulise eh, amasebe eh, kakulume ndakona pakatuitu.
I greet the, the, the members from the.
Departments.
Departments of the government.
Di bulise zonge stakeholders eskona kunye ne partnersitu.
I greet all the stakeholders here and our partners.
Honorable Chairperson, eh, to welcome you in Sandis River Municipality.
Ukamkeela wu, ntonisaloo kule, kulumaspala.
We appreciate the contribution and support we have been receiving from all the stakeholders.
Siabulela in aso esifumeleyo ku stakeholders zonge.
When we took oath of office, we committed to the people of Sandis River Valley to do better.
Asa sitata isifungo, say yesa, sa, sa, tata isifungo, sokubasi zako, tata inwateba kubantu, kwe, ukulungi sa impilo zabantu.
To work with other stakeholders driving the same vision.
Okusabenza, nes, nesinye stakeholders, okukubela pambi de injongo zetu.
This evidence of work we do as a collective.
Obunu inavokbona karsitobana sibesa sonke.
The, this visit comes at a great time where issues of climate change need to be understood.
Kufikey tashaloku basi kukwetzi zonge izindo, kubaze, kuba uchinjako kwe mozulu, kufuneke zi kondisi suganjani.
Planned for and dealt with at local level.
Zi twanu se lekwa ye zi zongi siswe, genkizi tateru inwale.
Our communities cannot get information from the meteor park directly from the lawmakers.
Abanbo kshala, akumeleze kangi ndoba ba fundengezindo, emapepe ne kotwa, kufalindobana bazi fumane, kubantu bo wisomteto.
Honorable members, your presence is appreciated. We have come to municipality ika, to municipality that is ika to make, to take up space in all aspects of local government. During 2022 National Upper City Awards, Sandis River Municipality took, took second place, second position.
Kui ngaleye ya esha engasepeleni, si fumanse ndobana zikona izindo, izi ngakange si fumane ngalelo ezakala.
Aye, kage, na leo ba, e kukupiswa no, e lezen dalo, Lomaspala wa fumanu wongwa, wa pomisdi ni, ni ngatwa.
You can applaud. You can applaud because this municipality won the award in the climate eh, competition that took place.
This visit comes right after the climate change lehutla that was held in Depeun and Green Climate Fund Provincial Project Presentation in Cape Town.
Yanzeka lendo, mbi ngobana beku ko esnonutela, zipatelele uchinjoleze mozulu etepen etekwini nasekapa.
Well, discussions and ideas were shared on how to manage and derive economic benefit from our natural resources.
Apokwa kovula indaba, banasi izuzanjani kwe zinduzu zenuvili.
Integral to that was knowledge, application, research and closing caps between government policy.
Undoko apoye kubana kutigiansulua zikuvali nalamsanzuko yo pakati kwe zindezanzo angukulume ndeni meka kontobo.
Provincial strategies and municipal bylaws, as well as making climate change a resilient matter of discussion.
Wa kuki shawakulu, injela yokebanakunga nyangezelu anjani, kumelewa nene zimeko zuchinjole mozulu.
Today we talk climate change and biodiversity.
Namshanjee si tetan uchinjole mozulu, si tetan anges dalwe zpilayo zathuka thukene.
Which we cannot master without a clear strategy in place.
Sosaskuazwi yanzake londo, singenali trebu ne kengel takileyo.
In 2022, the Sandis River Municipality Council adopted that we call Clean Sand River Ecosystem, that address all elements that impact and deal, ideal society as a far environment issues.
Come, 2022, los Sandis River, Kumaspala, watata inyatelolo, kubana sibene, manza, ototregileyo, kwaye si singa tenaspinimeko ezpasa mesa.
Health and safety, food security are concerned.
Yon ngalabo kakulu, ngabisegolu kujia, nokuselego.
We are in a charge and passionate about ensuring a resilient society that prides itself by attractive health rivers, clean and beautiful streets, green parks and environmentally friendly play areas.
Si, si nomla kak, si ngabanda banomla kakulu, kubana bashali, abanomlu banje, nemilambi kotregileyo, malatata otregileyo, ni ne meko buume espilaku yo eno totaiko.
Green open space, clean business and households.
Nemmanza elshaza kua kunye nem, manza yezo shishino, na yoevulekleni totregileyo.
Walkaways, clean buildings, adequate and clean operation facilities and biodiversity.
Indawe ztotregilewa, anjua kuso ezakiwo, kua kunye nendawo zokuchulo na zoeszotregileyo.
Leading to clean us Sandis River Municipality.
Si tekenkosbe Nomaspala ototregengakundi.
Creating a safe and healthy environment for our communities.
Bashali betu, bashali winda o eh, sempilweni.
Will ensure that our future generation have something to inherit.
Okukia konseksu bana bandua nesbazalayo, kuitashelzayo, bayo kua zubane kamva elkakambi leyo.
A story to tell of how well ran our race and preserved.
Kuchokbaliswe, ngembali, yokejela esilbale kenga yolkato.
The environment and rich culture.
Sibene kobeko, eh, es, esibense na yonendalo esngongileyo.
For us to live healthy life.
Okuzaskuanso basempilwenente.
We need to act now and preserve our environment for the culture and future generations.
Funeka sngapoze, si masseko, sense izindo ngoku, okuzene sogulo nesizayo na sosifumane, sikamleklendilo.
Galomasu city, namkelekile kulani pati nonuabe, xsekae.
So in that, I say welcome.
Engosistla.
Siabulela stalo.
Thank you very much, Councillor Khune.
Siabulela taiba.
Thank you very much, Councillor Khune.
Siabulela taiba Khune.
Eh. Datutapa umvire u Councillor Khune uti.
Datutapa, did you hear eh, what Councillor Khune said?
Ovi. Utisamgeleke lezkululi paji.
He said, well, welcome, take the jackets off.
And has wa, utetelondo wa kuya chisa.
Is he saying that because it's hot or what?
Yeah, but utima zkululi paji.
That he says, let's take our jackets off.
Kage u Councillor Khuna katetanga lamke mbozija.
He didn't mention the dogs though.
Kotsi.
They are lished.
Ya kutwa injas bochi ya si singazense Councillor Hune.
Can do as we please? Not like that.
Obunegasungo chini dizocha dizumnigasungo ukusamta luba ditin uka itoli zetivi na bandua xseka yabazale.
Thank you very much eh Majoro.
Siabulela Majoro.
Eh this indeed, and we must appreciate this honorable Mba Tha.
Na si bulilelebegekleyo Mba Tha?
Eh it happened also in Paphalo City yesterday.
Yenzeka lene pahu Paphalo City zolo.
Kage anipidan matadiele, matadiele the whole council, they could, they could hold the meeting up.
But you didn't beat matadiele, matadiele could just hold the meeting ibambi ntsangani swapa ngoba ibyo.
All of them were there, all of them.
Bebe pabonke.
Yeah, apa it's only the mayor, the speaker, eh Councillor Smith.
Apo uso tulopu.
Molo Councillor Smith.
Somlomo no Councillor Smith mo. Greetings, Councillor Smith.
Uka pan. Ay ay ay, I see yes.
As a real mamchaue.
Su tlala ngitakazela samu.
Eh and then there's Councillor Kusheka.
Molo Councillor Kusheka.
Okteba Kusheka.
Oh benkumboba onga ba Councillor banga pan.
I thought they were all outside.
Councillor Smith kala kute ulalanga pan uka itoli, uka itoli, uka itoli. Agandiva mosu right eh eh Councillor Longboy, welcome. Oh she's here eh Councillor Bakana.
Siababa Bakana konanaye.
Councillor Jonas.
Siababa Jonas.
Councillor Ndaowo.
Okteba Ndaowo.
Oh, no, no, no. How many councillors all in all do you have, Speaker?
Banga pi bebonke.
Sixteen. Ah ya Koraida.
Elishumelne stada.
Ah ya Koraida, councils, council forms a koram bang. Does Councillor?
No kubali na ela nele uka kali swangalo.
Okay, good. Councillor Bosman. Hello, Councillor Bosman.
Siabuli sa.
Councillor Koraid, we can give you a separate hall and take decisions very fast.
Singa nipinda au ninsiz.
Those who are not there will, will brief them later.
Na bangia koe ba baufa mfa.
Councillor Erasmus is here from the district.
Okteba Erasmus uvela kuistili.
Any other councillor is here?
Konamye olapu taiba.
Ah ya Koraida, let's, let's meet outside, take decisions.
Tiban nen panje kwenzwe istalibo.
I'm also told that the MM is here.
Di tlaba no MM.
Titlas, is it master or miss?
Titlas, imama ngatata.
Master, master Titlas, right? Eh welcome MM.
Siakwa mkeela na MM.
Now, you see, for a council to create and for the decisions of council to be processed, the MM must be there.
Okuzes zongis klibose zotaba zitatwe kufuneka o MM abekona.
Now, because the MM is also here, I think I want to have a meeting with you quickly.
Tlanganso na nipanje bage MM olapangu.
We must just process two things, three things.
Betenjinos ben datus isklibi.
You know, but it's not configure calling, even the write-up is coming.
Then when I meet Jonas back, I'll be fine.
Yeah, and then no CFO will be briefed, MM has power to take decisions on his behalf.
MM, it is klibo CFO no bage.
We also have eh Director Mbonwe.
Si na yonamla li o Mbonwe?
On ti wene na apa ngapan.
I met him.
Matlamine, molo Matlamine.
I met her outside.
Yeah eh sa ubiza nista kazel kaloku ndo sa amieso.
I'll use your clan name because I'm part of that.
Esamista kazel ndisfunde pepe, kena panzin damtala ndatlala panzin miti mi amuzo tetasindo.
I nearly asked him to sit down when he said my clan name, I'm reading it from the paper.
Okay, eh I want to invite Honorable Kapa.
So tala ngoba begekle kapa?
Oh Honorable Kapa must give us a bit of an overview.
Uzas nega ke payana ma carbon change.
Eh on climate change in the public area.
Ngopatelele eznonutela kua ku ye no chincho le mozulu.
Let me check if you are still fine, are you still fine?
Nese right ipofunina?
Ni right ne?
Are you okay?
Singena eh im, im, imkayi niko, imkayi.
Getting there now, getting on the line.
Singena imkayi. Eh? Imkayi. Nindi vil.
But you heard what I was saying.
Singena imkayi.
We're getting there now.
That one, that one.
Right, that line.
Yo onale ni tetanga yo yiole. Honorable Kapa.
Obeggekle kapa?
Ma ndibame kaza zozbi nislar.
Me thank you, Chairperson.
Di kalen di tinbulisa bonk ababan tu balapa angolense lakutwa procol, protocols observed.
Let me greet everyone, all protocols observed.
Ingandu valige lo ndokbanti kalen di takisebanti bulisa u u mayor.
That doesn't stop me from saying that my greetings to the mayor.
Nos, nos, nosomlomo aké.
And the speaker?
Ne councillor aké koraita yo.
And the council that, the council that correlates?
Ne management ya ke koyo.
And the whole management?
Nama ward committees entenseluba kona pa.
And the ward committees that I'm sure they are here.
Nabobonke abant balapa Sani River Local Municipality.
And all the people from the Sani River Local Municipality.
Di bully say bonke abantabamele izi imebutwe tila.
And greet all the representatives of the organizations?
Oka ye izstructure iztila.
Or some structures?
Goba baso, baso tatinga treba yonndawa ni azozosindu.
To come and participate here.
Apa get, we are talking about eh bill, it's a city climate change bill.
Apas tetan womteto yilwa yo, lomteto yilwa yesitakaso ubiza, womteto yilwa yo wo chinja le mozulu.
A bill that is new, it is not appealing or repealing or amending any existing bill.
Mchakele womteto yilwa ya ochinji ndoa ukutu kula uhlengachlingisi ndo beke ya kona ngapambili.
The climate change is impacting on South Africa.
Chincho le mozulu, luya lo kazele mzanza Africa.
And causing droughts.
Lubange limbalela.
Crop failures.
Ukunga kuli kuizkialo.
Livestock deaths.
Ukufaku mvuyo.
And loss of life through floods, heat waves and tornadoes.
Noxwele kaga bandu ngayen koi tela noxusho pratiseleyo.
There is a number of eh vulnerable areas such as agriculture.
Si konagi ndawe tkanabege kahulu esfana ne zolimo.
Water.
Ezamansi.
Settlements.
Indawe kshaluwa kuso.
Infrastructure.
Indawe zazakelo.
Energy.
Ne zapmanza.
And health.
Ne zempilo.
And this also result in worsening of poverty, unemployment and inequality.
Bangele inkopekoyande kahulu abantu bangali ngani ngabikone ngesho.
This situation needs collaboration between stakeholders.
Lende funake kubanja swanenge abo banenge treba.
And all tiers of government.
Na wongama zekoka kahulu nende.
In order to reduce these vulnerabilities.
Okuzes u tonjulu esingagi.
And reduce the drivers of climate change.
U nechiswe nezindu esbanje la olchinja le mozulu.
And improve the communication and awareness about the effect of climate change.
Opoto lenenze la nenze lexsebenza ngayo tetatetwa nol koyo ngopatelu chinja le mozulu.
The consequences of our country.
Uka koseko welizwe letu.
As long as our international agreements.
Ni ku ye ne zefumela no zamazwe ngamazwe.
Compel us to take steps to reduce carbon emissions.
Siyas nyanzelba singri pi siente lukuchanga yemo yinolileyo.
And improve lives under climate change.
Opoto leno bomba bandu ape chinja nukwe mozulu.
This meeting is therefore.
Lende tlanganso agendingati.
Part of the process of developing and overarching legislation.
Ina lenye oba kubekumteto wiswa yo okubunge la goonke.
That is to address the realities of climate change.
Oza utetan gezi ndo ezitibanayo no, no chinja le mozulu. Lomteto yilwa yo.
The climate change bill.
Lomteto wo chinja le mozulu.
Is thus the first draft of a legislation.
Go kalo yilwa yo okuiswa.
That is specific to the climate change in South Africa.
Ochonge ne ngo, no chincho le mozulu mzanza Africa.
And therefore, public input is insen, is essential.
Gogo balekele kahuluba nabantu ke bashomle kuo.
So that we formulate law that is aligned with the aspirations of the, all the citizens of South Africa.
Okuzes kobekumteto oza utufanele wo nke umdon omshali wasemzanza Africa.
Therefore, in this meeting, you are invited to feel free.
Okke glen tlanganso nyatayelba ne kulu leke.
To express all your views.
Ni kaze inje leni vagaleluanga yo.
On any aspect of this bill.
Na ipini ndwe lapo lomteto yilwa yo.
You are invited to be assured.
Ni ya konseki iswa.
That your views.
Obba imbo nozino.
On this legislation.
Lomteto wiswa yo.
Matter to us.
Ballege kahulu ku.
As the Parliament of the Republic of South Africa.
Njenge Parliament ya mzanza Africa.
And therefore, this is your opportunity.
Lituba lenuke.
I thank you, Chair.
Mgozisal.
Thank you very much, Honorable Kapa.
Siabulela begekle yo kapa.
Eh kutwa maskulu lipaji.
We're told to take off our jackets.
Datutapa rekuva ngipaji.
But he's wearing a jacket.
Uh ya chango.
He's feeling hot right now.
Tutima rekulule yan.
Now he has taken off.
Ima joruma.
Joro told you?
Gogo ngagi kutu ma jora kaikupi ene ya.
My Joro is also not taking off his.
Kutenu kaikupile ma joruma.
Why not?
Oka yo MM angaypendro lombo.
MM might answer that question?
Pa itube. Oh scali skulleti, alright, Speaker, alright?
Somlomo?
And ifunindo singa dzakreta.
I don't want anything to overpass you.
Alright, alright. Aban bakta okulu lipaji bo nabangi bezabu kusa obana problem. Kasun obaleka apa pasaschi. Si sa obaleka esabu mespete tautapa tinazalo eseti si sali ah inklulentendiboni zawen sakalaka eh Sani River eh di genan imbo uzubani asas iszonge.
Did I ask if you know zonga?
Anisas? Anifunno sas? Ah siswe. We're unemi kuba we. Di ubuzilu bawi asas isto, isto, istoana wati e istoza wati e wefut, di abuzangoku is, iszongo ya sas uti e wefut, uzas isong? Okay, okay, be, before we moshah.
Ngapapa si moshake yo kele.
Mika teko eh please, please speak to us.
Tetanati ke.
Use this mic? That one? Please don't take long eh when you see me stand up, even the people of Sani River Major, when they see me stand up, we give you an opportunity in the clale pants, when you see me stand up, you must know what I'm actually saying, sukville.
Anin bo nanpakama nani jenba ni lapo, antin dimenge nyawolsho se nyansba pelile ndikville ye gangoku.
So Mika teko, the problem is that she faces there.
Mika teko nti flateleke yen.
So she can't see me when I stand up.
Agan bo wena pakama.
So ninasenzi zomtale ubanti pakete.
Umile kutetanga se.
Unayo len di okte tashelit.
Kutu tetanga yeke.
Na ya kasa iskosa ke.
She doesn't know kosa.
Singa mseba na.
We can talk about.
Uka itoli.
Abshe. Ah si, yeah, yempela, this is South Africa.
Mzanza Africa nyan, nyandi.
Because you responded, mithe ayee, and that's how it's done.
Ni pendu walandi tinati ayee yendi nduangolo sho.
I've concluded people of Sani River knows Changani. So we'll speak in English just for protocol.
Nyesi seni tetan jeke.
I am Mika Teko Sitole from the Department of Forestry, Fisheries and the Environment.
Ndi ngu Mika Teko Sitole ndisuka kuisebe leza mashate zolimo ne ndalo esnongileyo.
Eh first of all, I would like to eh observe all protocol from the portfolio committee and the leadership of the municipality.
Nifunubulisa bonke inkokele na inkokele zomkamaspala.
And greetings to the community members that are here.
Di bulise nabashali.
I am going to talk to you about the contents of the climate change bill.
Zaken te tekeno mongo lapo kulumteto uyilwa yo.
Climate change is a reality, it has been said by the previous speakers.
Abebela pa bai te tilwa indwe koyo le yo chinja le mozulu.
All of us, one way or the other, we have been impacted upon by climate change either directly or indirectly.
Mbako njele stracha zilwanga yo lo chinja le mozulu, noba luskapazela ngo oka ye aluskapazela ngo tembo.
And we all participate or undertake the different activities, one way or the other, that makes a contribution into the emission of the greenhouse gases.
Se bana yo ginje la noba ye ipi, esitisbe ne kalelo ngayo ekpume ni kuweske si zingozesipuma zemo yenuetu ku ndalo yetu.
Some of these activities include electricity generation, transport sector, waste management, eh land use planning and management such as establishment of settlements.
Esine sa soke ya ba kaku petchwa manjombane klanbi ku istu tesisbenzisa yo ku zindu esakayo sesinye zenjele skupanga zo ke lomo yinolileyo.
All of these different activities emits greenhouse gases such as your carbon dioxide, methane.
Zonke gesinje la si esinza zukupala lomo yinolileyo zufagemo yenbisikrin house gelendo zindu esfana ne carbon dioxide, methanei.
Um ozone and others.
Ne zineyek.
These gases changes how the system functions and it warms up the atmosphere.
Eske eschinja inje la inkobo yenda le sebenza ngayo spasamsa ninalenda alo sikuyo.
Leading to many different extreme weather related events such as droughts, floods, sea level rise, hailstorms and many others.
Si kapazeleke ngoku nezindu zimoshaga laipenda lu enisanga balu knyuka kuwelanje singa nyuka uchisa kahulu ne nsekele zenveili.
Given that we have been emitting greenhouse gases and we have been observing this impact, there hasn't been any legislative framework that was guiding climate change in South Africa.
Nanzindo ke nango nabesi kachaze lo zezmeko zikonezmeko zukoyo zokuchoga le greenhouse lememo yenolileyo ingena payana, bengekeka kekbe kumteto wiswa yo tembo mzanza Africa ochonge ne na yo.
Hence, the process was started to develop this climate change bill that has about six chapters and four schedules.
Ku ye wa zanyo agen ngoba kutulu no agen ngoku lomteto yilwa yo nezachukwe zitanda tu uneswangi so payana ezine.
This act in chapter one of this bill wants to enable the development of an in effective national climate change response eh and a long-term just transition for the economy and the society.
Isatlo kosokala si funutetan inje la ngasinga twanga yo le meko kuchongo anenayo nenzele kapazela ngayo koko sholu etu.
In a manner, we do that development in a manner that gets us to protect the environment now and make it safer for the future generations.
Vasenzalondo siya kwa zukusinda lo leznongileyo ngoku sepini si kusele na kusisukuluana esisayo.
With the main objective of the act being to have everyone participating in the space in order to respond in, under the governance of the principles of cooperative governance.
Isa umitage ngoba wongu mdo nenka treba glen de kubonie inje lenga sakele wangayo kule mekwinzi ma nenzelenga lau wangayo kubambi sana.
We all want to build resilience to the impacts of climate change and reduce the emissions of eh the greenhouse gases in the atmosphere.
Si funi khatisa le meko yo chinja le mozulu, si bena yeke ngonengele yo ku lisana no ngapi sa le ezige si zingolileyo zupuma zee ku ndalo yetu.
And most importantly, to get to just trans, to, to, to have that just transition into a low carbon and a climate resilient society in alignment with our commitments to the international space.
Si kwa zengo no tikaschindaschinja ngenzele fanele klayo si chinja la egbe ni ngoku si lungi sale meko yo chinja leze mozulu nalemo yenolileyo nukuzeskuha zuksebenza sana ukiya pambili.
It is an act that is going to be applicable in South Africa and it is going to bind all organs of state and it is going to be a specific environmental management act under the National Environmental Management Act.
Ngumteto za laola onke mzanza Africa iben ngumteto za sekenswa wana takse zwa zongis kribes noktanani ne ndalo esnongileyo.
And when, in certain instances where there's going to be a conflict in climate change issues, this act will stand.
Guza atige wan beko nguzulu wa nol koyo ku zimikma ye yo chinja le mozulu nanzindu za wamangolo mtteto.
Chapter two talks to alignment and institutional arrangements for provinces and municipalities.
Isatlo kosebi niso na si tetapangoku lungilelaniswa ke Mika tungubo ku ye nama lungselelo Mika koseko.
All organs of states that are responsible for emitting greenhouse gases and facing a potential of being impacted upon by climate change will have to review and amend their policies and plans to integrate climate change. It is also going to allow for organized labor, civil society, business to be able to advise government on climate change issues. Not business. And on the institutional arrangements, it is going to provide for provinces and district and metropolitan municipalities to use the existing IGR forums to be utilized as climate change forums. Those forums will coordinate climate change issues within those provinces and those municipalities. And they are both going to be reporting. The province or the MEC forum will be reporting to the Presidential Coordinating Council and the municipal forums will be reporting to the provincial forums. There is going to be guidance on the establishment of the Presidential Climate Commission. Which is a commission that is comprised by all organs of state, different organs of state and representatives from all sectors of society. It is established by the president and it should not comprise of more than thirty members to advise government on how to move towards reducing greenhouse gas emissions and how to build resilience or respond to climate change impacts. It will also be responsible for guiding the country on how to move on the just transition matter. Chapter three focuses on climate change response for provinces and municipalities. All provinces under the leadership of MECs and municipalities under the leadership of the mayors will be required to undertake vulnerability assessments and develop climate change response plans and strategies. Provinces and municipalities will also be required to develop implementation plans under the strategies which will be integrated within environmental implementation plans in provinces and IDPs in municipalities. Chapter four focuses on national adaptation to the impacts of climate change. First thing there will be required to develop adaptation objectives, which is why do we need to be responding to climate change? What do we want to achieve? And we will also then develop indicators that will help us to track whether the objectives that have been set are the correct ones and we are implementing the right interventions to attain the objectives. In order to do this long-term planning and understanding how we are responding to climate change, we are also going to develop adaptation scenarios, which looks at how are these climatic changes going to affect the country in the different sectors now, in the midterm and in the long term. All of these three things that I mentioned that will be undertaken or developed will inform the development of the national climate change adaptation strategy. Which will be required to be mainstreamed in all policies and plans for the country. So that resilience is built or there is response to the impacts of climate change by every sector in the country. Throughout the implementation of the adaptation strategy, we'll then be required to gather all the information regarding how we are moving towards attaining the objective and develop a synthesis report that will be presented in cabinet as well as in our international commitments under the UNFCCC. All the sector departments that are mentioned in Schedule One will also be required to develop sector-specific climate change adaptation plans. Those plans will be reviewed every five years when after implementation and a report will also be presented in cabinet. Chapter five talks to greenhouse gas emissions and removals. First of all, the minister will be required to gazet our greenhouse gas emissions trajectory, which is how we are going to be responding in reducing our greenhouse gases as a country. The greenhouse gas emissions trajectory will guide how the sector-specific emissions targets are set for the different sectors in Schedule Two and also how the carbon budgets will be allocated for the different industries that are undertaking activities that emit greenhouse gases. And the allocation of carbon budgets for. For us or for everyone to know which are these sectors, the minister will provide the list and the minister will also provide all the, publish the greenhouse gases and also publish all the different activities that emits the greenhouse gases so that we all know which activities contributes towards that. And to know how we are doing in terms of emitting our greenhouse gases, there is a requirement to develop a greenhouse gas emissions inventory. And an annual report will be provided that will show where we are reducing and where we are still struggling. Chapter six talks to general matters and transitional arrangements. It talks to what type of regulations are going to be developed that will bring an effect to the act itself. Because an act without regulations is just like a toothless dog. There is also a section that talks to what type of penalties will be given to those that are not complying with the act. It also shows how everyone is going to be able to appeal to some of the decisions that will be taken and how public participation processes are going to be undertaken as well as what type of consultations are going to take place as far as the legislation is concerned.
Thank you very much, Mekateko.
Siya, Bulela, Mekateko.
Mekateko. Mekateko.
Mekateko.
What does Mekateko mean? Yeah. Thank you, blessings. Nonzikele. I think it's much easier like that.
We can leave it here?
Social distance. Covid has taught us many things. Alright. Mimville? Did you hear? No, that Kapa, Mimville.
Did you hear that Kapa? You heard, Mekateko?
Well, so one accord.
We'll see. You don't have that vibe. Are you missing church? I can't miss church while I'm here. You can just close your eyes and pray then.
I want to pray now.
You want praise, isn't it? You're missing church, aren't you? I'm just going to pray right here. Yes, the water. Those who want to be baptized, I've got the water. You can make a line.
Okay, let me invite Honorable Mukunu.
I've been speaking for long now. I'm not saying anything. Do you want me to continue talking? Are you fine? You're done with me? I've got good news for you. Not going anywhere.
Thank you, Honorable Chairperson. And Honorable Members. Honorable Your Worship, the Mayor. The Speaker and the Councillors. The Municipal Manager. The Parliamentary Staff. And the Community of Sunday's River Municipality. And Sarapartman District. Now we've come to what we call in Zulu uvutondaaba.
Now we've come to what we call in Zulu the climax.
Where we now going to listen to the community. But this is the procedure that we are going to follow. The participants will raise their hands. And the Chairperson will give you the opportunity. The Chairperson will take five on the right, I mean ten on the right-hand side and ten on the left-hand side. And the participants will then occupy the middle seats. Each participant will be given five minutes to make oral submissions. You will introduce yourself and tell us whether you agree or you support or you don't support the bill. Then you will give us your views on the bill. The oral submissions will be done. So if you feel that within these five minutes you could not say all your views. You can then do a written submission. And Chilega is there. She's going to assist you with the written submissions. So submissions are in two ways, oral and written. So if you don't feel like talking, but we are encouraging you to talk, you can just write a written submission. So all, everyone is invited to talk. We are here to listen to you. So you, you are welcome to do all the presentations as we are here. Because we are here to listen as the legislators. We know, Honorable Mayor, that sometimes they would like to talk about local issues. But we are here today focusing on this bill. Although we're not going to stop you from saying those things, but we are, our main focus is on the climate change bill. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Honorable Mukunu.
I told you, I am here to stay. Not going anywhere. I'm in charge. Nobody will speak here if I don't appoint that person. I'm in charge. I'll also get you some. I've got someone here right next to me. I've got someone here right next to me.
Gasekunene, yeah.
On my right, on my right.
Uto, Mankunu, ndikale, di note isanla, ezini shume, on the right.
I'm starting with ten hands on the right.
Gasekunene.
Gasekne, right.
No, no, chadisa, ndikala, gasekunene.
And also, chadisa, gasekne.
And then, left is what? Is noel.
Gasekoso.
Then, this was a, apa, a koso.
I'll come to my left hand side.
Nivilemos.
You understand?
Nyantol.
Do you understand?
So I'm going to start ekune.
So I'll start on the right.
No chadisa.
Also get this waiting arrangement.
Ekune.
On my right.
And then I'll come ekoso.
Then I'll go on my left.
Nyantolamis.
Do you understand now when I point down here?
Good, right.
Is it fine?
Good, let me know the hands on the right.
Maska like a pangasekne.
Mankunu says, if we know you, you come here, you give us your name, which structure do you represent, where you come from, which ward? And you tell us whether you support the bill or you don't, and then you can make other inputs, we give you up to five minutes.
Mankunu, uteki, kase, legi, ngokukonjiwe, oza, zuzo, shalapa, oza, uteta apa, kase, kalba, ikamalako, nombutomelayo, besi ke, utasa, na, lomte tu yilwayo, kanyaukaba.
I, di note is, isanlas, gasekune.
I'm noting the right hand side.
Ekune ne, is you on the, the side.
Nene, ke, aba, ngapa, abanga sekne.
A nde, ayaske, lelondo, ba, ulinde somebody else as utetu, ba, oti.
I know you're waiting for one.
The same years, ah, now.
I know you're waiting for one person to start and then you'll all follow.
By the way, councillors can make inputs here.
No councillor, nabanga, posama, zue apa.
Now, MM, if you, you must know you're representing your views, please don't represent the views of council here.
Ba, ume apa, ge, MM, uyas, ba, umeleza, kwimbona, umeleze, bunga.
I, itlamsegas.
You can come, say.
Any other hand?
Sekone, si nisancha?
Nisa, nisapeng, ni funu kumamela kalutin.
Ni funu, you want to hear what he says first?
Alright, aye, no problem, masieku. A koso. Yeah, koso is pa, is better than this, and isai ngapa ya, di kapa. Is that? Tella, ni pagamisi sanla, ndinboni, ndinote, isasi si, nawe isam, mlande ele, yeah, di vuya, kritike, ka, pagamiso mama, you.
I'm very happy when I see the females putting up their hands, the women.
Kebongomam. Si sa, kubongomam.
Yeah.
Tanda, buma mamna. Aninga, intabridi lenzo, ndin, tanda, kau ketabuma mam, eh. Konomi, mama? One more. Di kela, mama, oi, one. Agoma, mufunu chato? Oi, one, okay, utada, ge. Okay, I'm ready, if you are ready, my brother.
Si, ndilungi leke, dada, apa, pambili, obasele, ulungi le nawe.
Yeah, there must be alright. Okay, okay, right. Alright, di. Man, kala ndi, bulisa, bulida zetu, eziko yo namshanjee. Eh, bulisa, wonge, umdu, o, tatinga kheba, osuke, gundawa, bezuka kuyo, o, gwenze, lavela, apa, kuti, ngapakati, kuwe tu namshanj.
Let me start by greeting the leaders, greeting all the participants that have left everything and come to be here with us today.
Okay, di, di, di aykasa, lemono, eh.
I suppo, I support this bill.
Di aykasa, eh, indo, emkonaba, i shupaga kulu, indo, yoku ba, si, singabando, si decide, yoku ba reactive instead of being proactive.
Indue, shupayo, oh, what's the problem with people with that, we decided to be reactive instead of being proactive?
O, o kuba, ndikumbulaga, khe, abang, ndanfunda, nabu, apa, gwasi, scholars, lapak, fuchane, evo sumzi. It was nineteen ninety-eight, when we were told that in twenty twenty, we'll have a problem about water. And then since then, government rest, rested and then waited for that, eh, inemeness time, because I've, I'm not a, a news person, but along the way, okay, sorry.
Di sakumbula, ke, kwa, kuiskolo, iskolo, ndanfunda, kuso, apak, twa, evo sumzi, wango nineteen ninety-eight. Sa skalele, ngo, kuba, ngo twenty twenty, kuzaba, kina kia months. O, do I go government, oh, ko, ke, ngo, ke, hotonyao, osuke, langelo, taysha, andingo, umdu, ke, na, ke, wendaaba?
Andingo, umdu, wendaaba, kota, gen, di enda, kape lo, kuba, eh, kuma, klasamani, kuye, wa, silent. And then it's been years, si si, vanga le, i bill, he, namshanjee, it's not because of, is that, eh, isol, kudala, imane, evakala, kota, ge, yoku ba, mayte, implementwe.
Di pauli, indo, ndangwa, nangi, omduendaaba, and pauli, English, okay. I've noticed that although I'm not a media person, but I've noticed that there has been some silence since that time for years. I haven't been hearing anything, we've been hearing though, that there were plans to have this bill, but now, when it comes to implement, implementation.
Yeah, it's been dragging for a long time, and then it's scary, because we are trying to raise children and then we, our grandmothers and grandfathers have been occupied with this, eh, inemeness problem that has been, been put, and then it's, it's stressing that the ozone layer has been destroyed for so many times, but I've seen.
I, be, 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 kuku nyao, be, kuku, eh, nyao, kakulu, ngoba, sababonila, bandua, no, ma, kulu, be itu, besoko, leleme, kukuzanyo, ayek, kuswe, wakuvuwa. I, iyo, nandi katasayoke, kuku, naki, ngo, ozone layer yetu?
I, imoshakala. Eh, and then, jebi, moshakala, nje, I'm happy anyway, to see, to notice on the bill, there is a thing that we called a carbon, that, a carbon budget, yeah, I have noticed that there is a carbon budget, of which that now, each and every institution or each and every business that is producing a lot of carbon has to align with the government, that there, there is this much of carbon dioxide that the business had to produce each and every time.
Si, bonile, ke, paya, na, utetwa, ngo, ozone layer, eyo, nageleyo, kota, gen, dia, vuya, kuba, nogonbonila, apa, kuwe deal. Ikona, nogin, de tete, we, ngende, bezo, utwa, carbon budget, apa, ke, ku, ngati, swanakona, na, maziko, na, mashishi, ini, akupaga, kuli, carbon dioxide, nins, kubu, koi, nsele, ke, ngo, kuba, na, banga, kuazin, jana, kuwe lungelela, nisa.
Alright, I think, eh, in my closing, is that eh, by the time o si si, abated, na, I've noticed there are, there are plans and implementation of five years interval. My question is, okay, it's not my question, but eh, it's my view, my view is, I so wish that there is another plan within that five year plan, because eh, the ozone layer can be destroyed in a month or six months, so we, we cannot wait up until we reach that.
Kanga, kukumbela, ke, di pauli, ngelte, sha, o si se, be tetap, uteka, guza, mani, kuba, akho, iska, abose, minyake, milhanu, apa, kusake, koto, ngalento. Owamomno, ino, ke, ibi, kubana, ibi, ngaski, kubeyekone, ni, planins, wa, yuba, lendo, ikikoko, pahakati, ngoba, kuti, ozon, ozone layer, inga, kuazu, vele, yonakali, nje, pakati, kuwe, nyange, zimbala.
Okay. Eh, as I've said in my closing, that I support this bill hundred percent, hundred percent. Alright, nga, di, di yeke, ne, aban, dabani, nzi, bandas, nje, ngokolo, lue tu, ikama, ngokolo, lue tu, is name, gunosa. Eh, di, sugata, what, five, what, five, what, six, elokshini, as long as, gula, ndishala, apa, umna, eh, ndishala, apa, embo, skakulu.
So in conclusion, I say, I support the bill hundred percent, many people know me as, kolo, lue tu, nosa, from what's, five, what, six, in the lo, in the location.
Thank you so much, Chairperson.
Siya, bulela, slalo.
I'm Sean Tom.
Ndongo, Sean Tom.
Just an ordinary community member.
Ndongo, msali, otalele, kele yo.
Chairperson, it's quite long overdue, because eh, it's been a while. Eh, I think I've got so many years eh, out of school, but I've thought, I was taught about this while I was still at primary level.
Man, di, shoslo, ba, nogo, liko, she, li, ten, kuda, ala, ndapume, school, we, me.
Before having my notes, let me firstly say, I do agree and support this bill.
Apambani, fundo, kundikpali, layo, man, di, chwa, ndia, vumelana, kwa, ndia, utasa, lomte tu yilwayo.
And also make note that eh, it would have made it easy for us as our local, and, because I know our people, at least in future, if there was a scope regarding this bill, you would have have hundreds of hands that they want to have some support or some input.
Man, di, choko, ona, ndoba, na, kuito, she, liza, ibi, ngaski, no, kota, binga, kumshambi, ndwe, kulu, ngewe, yo, eh, yambisanana, lomte tu yilwayo, guza, boni, sanla, basili, kulu, mshambi, bong, kabanda, be, pagamsiza, nshaba, hundred percent.
Of which, trying to support that, eh, before having such activities like this, should be given an opportunity to the local municipality and exercise it firstly before, as our parliament or any other senior organizations comes. At least it would have made it easy for us.
Bezosense, la, luli, ndoba, lendo, ikikalo, pah, kwa, maspala, ba, be, fika, ba, ba, pezilwa, kakulu, mend, ba, fika, no, koseski, sa, ikala, apa, kwa, maspala, bezosense, la, lula, kakulu, londo, njega, bashali.
Eh, I also do support, because eh, when you drive to the N2 route to town, or summer strength, next to, or, it's plus minus a kilo or two kilometers away from Iplu Water Bay, wow. The smell when you are passing there under that bridge on your way to, in your bright, it's quite awful.
Da, di aykasa, lendo, kuba, eh, kwa, wamba, paku, N2, o, siya, ngase, summer strength, mshambi, kilometer, kanyas, desbembin, akunuki, Iplu Water Bay, ipaya.
Of which, let it make it easy for us now, at least for those that are doing eh, eh, science, as well as for those that eh, it will affect them in terms of eh, environment, eh, gee, the people that are working at the Atto Park, for instance.
Ma, ge, samu, benze, la, lula, kabanda, basibens, ange, zembe, ilo, kanyinda, lenzo, luluas, man, denzo, mzekelwa, ba, basibens, la, Atto Park.
Eh, before I do my closing, eh, we were once having such eh, occasions or such instances like this, but the concern, the main concern, what is the mechanism measurements? Or is the proof that the things that we are saying here will be measured that, there's this such a one, two, three that was said. What are the mechanism measurements that we will get as from here as the Atto or in the Sunday's River that, one, two, three was said in the Sunday's River? And they are supporting these things.
Na, anzo, kindu, ndifunu, yi, chuba, gawa, pama, kabo, abeki, we, yo, kwenzo, mlenga, ni, selo, mlenga, nselo, bana, city, lena, lena, laya, selenzi, and ibiti ti, we, landi, bitete, pa, isandis river, eh, Atto. Ah, yambenjani, ilenga, nselo, nja, ni, measurements, ayo.
Eh, I'm having a concern with this, because such occasions, they come and we're having our inputs, but while maybe, and maybe not, that decision have already been made, but it's just a pass by for us, yeah.
Koba, kena, pambi, likenze, kindu, bana, guziwe, kuti, si, chunbono, zetu, kotoa, kanyas, ba, sube, kete, nubu, nbinga, diskubu, swana, se, kala, senseiwa.
Because now, for instance, I'm raising the main concern of the N2 route whereby we're having an awful smell. But in five years more to come, maybe we will come back here, we will still having the same things, the same situation. Are you telling us that we must also raise the same issue that we've raised before?
Di, chongo, baka, luke, lendo, ya, se, N2 route, ndi, pagamsa, yu, na, vuya, pa, kimi, yake, milhan, ni, vuya, iseng, ayake, ifanayo. So, ni, ti, ni, ni, ti, kana, vuya, la, minyak, milhan, maspin, esyo, tetala, ndo, besi, tete, la, minyaka, milhan, itulay.
And the worst part is that unfortunately, without eh, pointing fingers to anyone that like eh, regarding, to circulate this information. I'm from the transport industry, but I don't see, or I didn't see anyone here that eh, was introduced from the Atto Park whereby they are, they, they are there regarding their animals and so forth. Because it also directly eh, yaba, kapase, la, kakulu, but unfortunately, I could not hear or see anyone coming from the Atto Park that is representing the Atto Park. But it's just only the mere people of us here in the local, of which, for us, we are depending from our own municipality that are taking the rapid, that was it. Nevertheless, the others, they are just doing their normal work.
And ifunu, be, ndikombi, minwe, bantu, inandizu, bakomba, mshamba, bamba, ndibe, be, kuzela, lendo, kotoa, ge, indo, njenin, katasay, ndoba, na, anbu, nimnandi, kuyishe, nilezo, tutu. Kotoa, nubu, nanga, kupa, kanyisumdu, apa, wase, Atto Park eh, ndi, ba, kapase, la, kakulu, kabanda, bapango, baba, sa, biansa, kakulu, ngese, luanian. Nde, ndibona, yoku, pagamati, nabamba, kule, kele, yo, balaphe, Atto, bona, anbabona.
Thanks so much, Chairperson.
Siya, bulela, slalo.
Can I just clarify something? I think when we started here.
Ndikala, ju, kai, kusoktile, o, kala, kuwe tu, apa?
We, we clarify that is the first eh, climate change bill, public participation.
Bestake, lena, in ngatreba, ka, wonge, wonge, kutetwa, ngomteto, o, yilwayo, wo, change, olremozulu.
And we are doing that so that eh, the community at large must have an input on this bill.
Sense, la, ndoba, na, bashali, ta, be, bonge, bakwa, zufaka, ilu, volabo, kuwa, wana, lomte tu yilwayo.
And eh, je, basile, kunama, secretary, tu, apa, la, be, just check the site, there are secretary, the secretary, eh, tu, are writing, who are taking notes, we are not taking you for granted.
Njengok, basile, apa, nje, ndala, ni, chonge, nalapetale, bakho, nabanda, bapa, la, yaba, ngono, pa, so, si, zamuboni, si, ndoba, na, ez, izimbo zenu, ases, tati, lola.
And for those eh, things that need the municipality or other departments, they will be referred to those department or the municipality.
Ez, zi, funu, maspala, si za, utatwa, zona, zi, siwe, kwe, lo, sebe, oganyaglo, maspala, lo.
And I'm happy that the municipalities here, before the end of this, they will respond, the respond to some of the issues that affects them, that affects them directly, because we can't respond on their behalf, but because they are today, they will respond.
Di, vuya, kumaspa, lela, apa, kobanga, pamba, kriju, basa, banalito, ba, loma, apa, bazpindulele.
Thank you, let, we can continue.
Si, ngakobe, ke, ngos.
Okay, man, di, bulisa, be, tunan.
Greetings to everyone.
Ndibulele, the parliament, ete, afikalela.
And also, also thank the parliament that has come to reach us.
About this climate change.
Gopatele, lulchange, olremozulu, lomte tu yilwayo.
Ngoba, uksongu, yaye, eh, ayafa, bamba, kuti, siya, sokola, nyan.
And it's sad, because we're losing people, the people are dying, and we are really struggling.
Eh, anzo, bam, demna.
I won't be long. Because I'm thinking of those that are coming behind me.
Jigutandi wenondu umo umna.
Amtandi wenondu umo?
Tixyalaka twenty-one Oza Street ezuite ipai.
Twenty-one Oza Street ezuite?
Epai. Umapaki Champion Kalela andka ward twenty-seven.
I'm from Champion Kalela, ward twenty-seven.
E organization ya maku kanyekuti na sangko na apampumakon.
Our organization is maku kanyekuti and sangko, that's where I come from.
Andi yamba na nimna.
I'm with you. I'm with you, I agree with you in this bill of climate change.
Indenka ende muelbanga bangaske zenzeke kule bill.
There are few things though that I would like to see in this bill.
Is uku investa in renewable energy.
It's investments on the renewable energy.
Lenaga sina yoyomba.
In the problem that we are facing of lack of electricity.
Oku nyantu restored nature to absorb more carbon.
Oku buisele wenenda lo ikua zo ba ikua zo itata le carbon.
Noku, noku protector, es forest, like Amazon.
Noku se la mahlatisinawa.
Nguwenza izinkuzezza makaya edzebe kuzzebe shushu. Ukwenza laba nubakuti abanyi bane itaitis ba yagulo bayasu like zindoz means.
And to make our houses more warmer because our people are ill, some have arthritis and some even die.
Le climate change bill, i zasneta, iba lekile kakhulu. Ngoba imosi bantu bantu asis gondi about this climate change. Se ivu yelake uku nisizekuti.
This climate change bill is going to be very helpful to us because many of us don't really understand this matter of climate change, so we're glad that you brought this to our attention.
Ngaski ke ezizindosizaka apa? Ngaski noba ngusukuka ngeni minu. Nikua zo buye nisipati report back. Sena zetinja ezizindo kalisipenle ape moye ngos.
Thank you. I wish you could be able to come back and give us the report back. So we don't want these things to just end up nowhere after we have discussed them. Thank you so much.
Molweni.
Greetings.
Eh, funuku ti inganga nense bazay.
All protocols observed.
Lo uteta yo kupandora wakwamo kukuluwa.
Ampandora mku kuluwa.
From Ekabeka.
From Ekabeka.
Ward twenty-seven, Champion.
Ward twenty-seven.
Ndi pumaku kunga wo amanja eh to NPO ya.
I'm from kunga wo amanja eh to N.
I NPO.
NPO.
Andifunuku zo uti, kui parliament ya.
This is what I would like to address to our parliament.
Tia ivuma le bill, tia yamba nabu.
I support this bill, I am with you.
Kubaka loku, uku jesukiayo yak affect climate change.
Because climate change does affect even the food that we eat.
Uku pefu mla kueto kuya affect climate change.
The air we breathe is affected by climate change.
Kakoka yoke maku zanyo ngamandla onke, i parliamente yenze, izindoz zasvisaka manditina si community.
Let then the parliament try by all means to assist us as a community so that we can also be well off.
Kubaka loku, i temperaturele, ias affect as no more polo neck ngo.
Because. Because the temperature even affects as Ato is hot. We're wearing now the big jerseys polo neck.
Andi zawiyeke, ifunuku ti, kui parliament.
In conclusion, this is what I would like to say to the parliament.
Mayenze, kwenzeké, isi bonse konge kuzesleyo ape Eastern Cape.
Please.
Ubana Eastern Cape is ipaga misa.
Please implement whatever you have brought to the Eastern Cape. Show us that you can bring Eastern Cape to another level.
Wa ye, ninga sheeli nisheli nje imali ipelela kono wangulu nazuko tukuki community. Abandwa anabetu abapangeli, afunupangeli.
You must also know that even when it comes to money matters, it mustn't just end up to those that are upping positions. But we must remember that even our children, they need jobs, they need to be looked after.
Andiyeke, pambilike ke i renewable energy, pambil.
In conclusion, forward with renewable energy, forward.
Mandibuli se, nditi amanja. Gawetu. Ome apapambi, Gulinda.
My name is Linda.
Festile.
Festile.
From Epai ezuite.
Ndisuke Epai ezuite.
Ward twenty-six.
Ward twenty-six.
My NPO is lean on me.
I NPO numpumaku yo iti lean on me.
Oko kala ke mshali ngapambil. Mandi tia ibulela namle sesini andikabi ndo?
Let me start by saying I'm really thankful for this section and I also agree with it.
But, you.
This hall is too small, however.
You ololo abantu base eh jono kubinga nobakinya. Iwe sekakbaku sabakona bantu base ipai.
It wouldn't accommodate people from Ato, especially if now there are people coming from Epai.
Dizem kolweni ke.
Now let me get to the topic.
Okuwa about i climate change, I think uku riskila, those are working in coal mines, bar riskilwe.
Those that are working in coal mines, I would request that if they can get re-skill, they will be skilled. Get more skills.
And kuskilwe abantu abantu acha kunena na makusi kazi. Kuba, kufuneka gunuchiswe imi godi yamalale.
And especially if we can empower the young and the women. Because now there's this thing of reducing the coal mines.
Kubandi nenkolelue ti, kune amalale kamesenzewa, kuya pegwa. Apegwa aja amanzi etu, sipinde sikombidena wo, mge moyosula anyu ke umoya wavo omta kupeke pezul. So we are competing with amalale, that's why in the system aku minimize we i coal mines.
I've got this belief that we are in competition with the coal itself. Because when it's processed, it uses water. And now I feel that we are in competition with that because it also emits some gases and in the air that we breathe.
Andi sali kuteke kuya pi, kui area ekutwa i Oyster Bay.
I'm not far from area called Oyster Bay.
I Oyster Bay, i area, I think ngokoyami i research, it targetiwe, kuba kwenze we the nuclear power plant.
And according to my own research, I think it's been targeted to have this nuclear power plant.
Ndi funuku ti, kubandu base kaya, no, aiko kini nayo because it's a spati radiation. Kule climate change, kule climate change bill, di kala inga considerishwa.
I'm asking that please don't consider that because it's also gonna cause us problems. It's gonna bring us some radiation, so I'm saying no to that.
Ndi pini nditwe need isolar energies.
We also need solar energies.
We need wind farms and or wind turbines.
Siya dianga lamapi kuaachi chumoya, nomba ne opeshwa ngomoya.
Also, uda danava gume ya bekewa tetra, me polluters. Ndi kindo ba i polluters, kumelindo bangu, si kona sia zazi big polluters ngonawa. Siya keli ndoba, ezipolluters, noko u government weyto, azicharge for uku noliso moyawe yeto.
Someone mentioned here, I'm not sure if it was the mayor, but mentioned that there are those that are responsible for pollution. And now what I'm asking the government to do is to actually find those that are responsible for pollution.
Also to, uku minimize we this oil and gas drilling eh enzekaayo. Because uku this oil and drilling eh shukumayo. I think nayo inakubane impact with climate change etu. Because uku pude bekewa tetra wati, our ozone layer is thinner or is getting thinner.
And also minimize this oil and gas drilling that's taking place because I can see there's some movements that are going around with oil and gas drilling. And someone here mentioned that our ozone layer is getting thinner and thinner. So I feel that this oil and gas drilling also affects this climate change.
Ndi pini ndukale yindoba, one house, one chocho tanks and solar panel on the top of the roof, I think will help.
Na ntsenyenda ngasneta, inklunji benye, ibene solar. Ibeni angelin, ibene chocho tengenyi, nandone.
Ibeni, ibene chocho tank, ibene solar panel. Mshamba kwezi zinkuzetu se RDB, krasisai kelwa, ukonse darishwe lo ndo.
So when they're building the RDB houses, if they can please consider that there will be that solar panel and there will be that one chocho tank for each house.
Kuyo yongele nshukumone movement yenzekaayo ngoku. Ndi akela si konse darishwe, kanyeva konse darishwe, abando abango mama.
In all this movement, I'm asking please if the women can be considered.
Also, i koni ndo endinga ifyo indo about the bio gas. Andi basi uku kini nobumta kaba yo nabu. I think if the bio gas is clean, I think nayo must be considered. Ukwenze ndoba, unripisake because dinenkolelo iti, si kuleme konje because of eslelele business yenzeka every day, kukukala amalala because it's zenzala lomba.
I'm not sure about bio gas as to how the emission, how clean it is. But I would say that we're having this problem because there is lot of activity using coals and generating power.
Also to government weyto, please leave no one behind. Kubangu ku, gesishiwe nati le sesini ibalu lekanga sizo ibambi Ato. So tinabandu base ipai ezuite in Yubrightini, sishue ngapandhi. Please leave no one behind, we are all South Africans.
Nengashi ngasemva. Kobagelen kanga nso sizo ibambi Ato, kandike sishala tina ezuite, siya kela nengashiymdo ngasemva.
Oh, mandibuli se, manentlini, ndibuli se kumalunga parliamente on.
Greetings to all the members of the parliament and to everyone here.
Ndi buli se nakume ya.
And greetings to the mayor.
Mandikale ngokuti, i bill eh, ndiamgeela.
Let me start by saying I do accept the bill.
Le bill ipetindu esinklesninga pakui.
There are many good things that are contained in this bill.
Kwezi nusingo ndeskapela kule bill, the participation yelando, yabashali.
What I noticed the most in this bill is the participation of the community.
Lo ndo yenzindoba, kweza advisory committees esafunkezbea ko. Asinoba umo, sibena bashali from Ekshale. We have noticed a lot of ukuza ndesini suggestions, as not noticed a kule bill, uku ike bisanakumbi.
This means then that if in those advisory committees, the communities can also be involved so that they can come with their input, now that will make this bill to be more enriched and contain more information.
Ndi afunuku ti paku cha wum dang, number na, si bambe smpanje lando mshambi, we would have loved uku ti sends a return submission, mshambi in a very, more advisory capacity from the community. Esi yamba paga tikuazo.
Let me say to cha we, unfortunately, cha wum dang, cha wum dang. Let me say that the, yo. Alright, except, yeah, we caught this whole matter halfway. So we didn't get it from the beginning. Because if we did, we could have been able maybe to have our submissions that are even more deeper.
Ndi pinda ndi esegunda andi one apocalypse bill, yeah, implementation.
Then I'll come also to the matter that I've noticed here in this bill when it comes to implementation.
Siya tanda ke kuitala lakakhulume nde, ulake shaka kulu bolotala le implementation, monitoring.
This is where we lack the most as government when it comes to implementation and monitoring.
As much le bill implementation ya isava, to the last person kumaspala. Ndi afuna uku ti ke, oh, oh, ukhulume nde from gunchulku. But to make sure ezizindos yenze, guys committees yenziwa. And ndendele zenzwa ngai, ingabi yinzele such a way yokba, zefeyvaritele, zefeyvarishela banda batile. As bekuwa is committee because yata ndukwenze ka within the government would divert into.
As much as I can say that at the end, it's the municipalities that are going to do the final implementation of this. But I would like the government to be involved all the way because what usually happens when things are to be implemented, there are always, there's always that lack of things not taking place as be the implementation.
Any into, nfunuku za kuyokle bill. Le bill mshambi ke kobangi kadi fmanangoku. Andiboni ndao apoa eti, kui current situation. Nje ngokusenza ka umnoseko le environment. We know e companies that are involved in all these things. I bill is outting in terms of punishment to those companies that are already there and to.
So I don't know because I just got this bill this morning. But I don't see a place, as we talking about the current situation that is taking place, those companies that are responsible for pollution in our environment. I don't see something that says in the bill, this is what will happen to those people that are polluting the environment.
Agusbe ne, nje ngokunjalo nje, the companies that found to be banguno bangela. And i bill itin in terms of environment, labor, rehabilitator njaane, weba moche kona as companies.
And then when those companies are found, now I would like to see where the bill says now, how do they rehabilitate the environment that they have already damaged?
Agokubela, when one look kui bill. Nje ngi tetanga consultations, organi consultation. How do we define the consultation when we talk about the consultation? See define within the government compartments, or any see define other bigger lando. Inzela yokusenza ezizindu.
So also when it comes to this consultation, how do we define this consultation? Do we define it like as a government consultation or it's got a broader scope of consultation?
Agokubela, mandibulele, ngokutrafta kule bill, as a proposed bill. After ikashelinisangaaka, I thought uku ti, South Africa is the only country engena yo regulation around this climate change. So isniga at least something, esnotjonga kuyo as a guideline when it comes to i climate change and other countries that are already bestensakuyo bona esabu bills in terms of climate change.
Let me also thank for the draft, for the draft of this bill because it's taken a long time. And what I've noticed that South Africa is the only country that doesn't have like regulations that are regulating the matter of climate change. So but now, now that we have this bill, we'll be able now to look at it as a guide, something that will help us also to be in line with the other international.
What I want to know is that the money to assist in reducing these emissions, where is it gonna come from? Are we gonna borrow it? Because we know that we're so bad, we've got a bad debt when it comes to the country with regard to borrowing. So where is this money gonna come from? Is it gonna come from the government or where? Also, something else I did not see in this bill is that it says they will be penalized. But now, does the government have already a way to penalize them? Or they are still going to consider and think about how to penalize all these people?
Of course.
Thank you. Greetings. To the members of the parliament that have visited us. And also mayor and the council. My name is Nomvulachek. I'm a member of #FriendlyEnvironment. Then that says I'm a volunteer for the environment and I care for it. I do accept the bill. However... So this is what I would like, since now the parliament, council have come to us. And the good proposals that they brought regarding this bill. I wish they could come back to us and come and say, number one, that has been mentioned, number two, that has been mentioned, now is taken care of, and then this is what we're going to do about them. I'm also thankful of this topic today, this topic, climate change. It's very important and it affects everyone, almost everyone in South Africa. It has also affected even the food production. Because this climate change now has caused even the earth, the earth can't produce the way it's supposed to. So as someone now who's self-employed and who lives on farming... I wish the government could come and also consider us, us, the people that who are poor down there, and then come and tell us, how can they assist us? And also tell us, how can they help us with the problem of electricity that we have? And I cannot avoid linking the two. Because when we need electricity to be able to do what we do on the land and to produce. I won't be long though, but I would like the government to come back to us. And also tell us, I'm also glad for the fact that you're talking about this just transition. I wish you could come back to us when you are implementing that. And I'm also thankful for the fact that you've considered even this danger that is harming the whole world, including South Africa, the climate change. In Yudinek, we've got lots of factories that cause lots of pollution. Sometimes we have scrap yards that just get bent while there are children near there and also there are schools near those places. Also, when the government is considering now fighting this pollution, there is one project that is now more or less on the part of pollution, which is now the solar panels. I don't want to be long, much has been covered by my partners. Greetings to the chairperson. And also the committee. The one here in front of you is honourable. What I like today, I'm there talking at the parliament. Usually, I see this on TV. I hope I'll also see my face there on TV. Let me just say to the leaders that have come with such a good bill to us. I also accept the bill. I will also mention what my colleagues have also mentioned. It will sound as if we discussed this matter before coming here. My biggest worry is that the most contributors to this... In this climate change? They are not here with us. That's my problem. If you notice, those are the rich ones. It's only the poor people that will hear all of this. Because when there's some mines, the mining activity that is taking place and also the air pollution, then we end up with diseases like TB. I may not have though the research as to who are affected by TB. You may find that is the poor. Climate change threatens food security. And then you find the rich, they're not affected. The people who are going to be severely affected are the poor. Well, climate change causes, has been explained? So we do have ecosystem here on earth, animals, plants and water, so we all live together? Then if there's one missing, then that's the end of life. Most of the community members are not here. Now, as leaders, we also need now to look at our situation and see how much information do we bring to the people, the communities? There's something called environmental education. But it's not done properly, where everyone now can have a say and say how important is nature to himself. What I would suggest then, let's have some awarenesses that will be taken around in the communities. That will relate to climate change. Even on adverts on TV? That can indicate how we are affected by climate change and also as communities, what can we do to deal with it? As I already said, the people that are big contributors to this pollution are not here and now us who are here, we've got a very little contribution. And we can quickly fight it. Our contribution is just throwing rubbish under. And the municipality comes and collects all of that? We will just request that locally, if we could have dumping sites, so that if we have missed this municipality truck, then we can throw it there on those dumping sites and then the municipality can come back and collect it. That's all the contribution as communities we have. That's all I came here to say. I'm the resident of Addo, one of my terms, I'm a word five. Of course. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Siabule. Do we take another round? Okay, let's take another round. Sisi, you're better first. I saw your hand there. We possessant. Yeah.
And he's on a panbilly. He's on checkers.
If we are agreeable, if we are agreeable, this should be the last round.
Where are you rushing to? Nobody's going to work, it's Sunday today. By the way, the church is closed now, it's out. Indoend. You don't treat visitors like that, we're visiting you and you want to go.
How many do we need? Three? Okay, let's get three more. Last round. Okay, let's get three more hands before spending. Okay, Maskuwe, this is...
Let's carry on, we'll see.
To all protocols observed, standing in front of you is Yamtanda Mqoli from the organization known as Lean on Me, from Lean on Me.
Lean on Me?
Yes, I'm from Ekabeka. The reason why I'm standing, I saw that youth is not well represented. And I felt like generations to come, they will blame us as the youth. I also saw that the most people close to me, I call them people, is the aquaculture is not represented in all the, in all the people who spoke here, they didn't talk about aquaculture. Aquaculture, which is...
Aquaculture.
Manzi, abashale manzi. No, is lwanian.
Animals.
I've done my research and most of, some of the implementation plans, I feel that your committee has, including green hydrogen, introducing green hydrogen, trying to help with electricity problem we're facing as a country. But in my end in eye is that this green hydrogen, funegue esebenzisa amanzi.
Now, when it comes to green hydrogen, it has to use water.
In which we have a crisis here, Eastern Cape.
Now, Eastern Cape has got crisis. And now that will interrupt the Okaatik persons.
So, my main problem is this.
This is now my main problem.
So if the aquaculture is affected negatively... We bring this, we bring this, what do you call this? As chemicals and all those things back to our plates. So meaning, siyazi, siyazi gulaala ngukwetu?
That would mean that we're killing ourselves.
So, we're an implementation plan that in eye for trying to save the climate.
So in this implementation plan to try to save the planet?
Please do make sure that apoku seveni, ani buyise, ani kosi more problems. Thank you.
Madisbulusele, ko, kubadwa sifaramente.
Greetings to the people from the parliament. This is a big day for us. Greetings to the councils. I'm Tembegabuzo. I'm in the cleaning committee and I'm also in the support group. I also acknowledge this change and I accept this climate change discussion. Yes, I will complain, it's about electricity. When there's no electricity, you can't be able to get good food because you get food, because some people are diabetic. Person who's diabetic needs to eat at all times, even those who have TB. And then there's also a matter of nurses carrying a heavy load and we would like to have at least one, a social worker that can come past there at least every week. I once visited the school in Mugani. I visited the toilets there. I discovered that there was no water in the toilets. You can't have that, having no water where there's children. Thank you. Greetings this afternoon. My name is Mnoneliliskris. I'm here, Nomathamsanga. What six? What six? I accept the bill. They're supposed to be part of this because they are the ones who are dealing with the environment in our area. The challenge that we have here as people that are here is that the people who are in charge of nature at the national parks, they are not here. Like in the way of recycling and how to access some other plants within the parks, so that's been on the piece of climate change. The reason why we have that such complaint is because the park itself would open up opportunities for young people, maybe they will be responsible for recycling, that will open up now job opportunities for them. And also for the plants. Something else I would like to request is that I've noticed that even in our schools, we're still using asbestos and my understanding is that asbestos is dangerous. Now, we're using that also in our houses, zakele, zwede, so if they can change those asbestos, that would make a change. And also now, if this can also, when the bill is brought to the municipalities, we do have dams here, irrigation dams, and now those dams, if through the municipality, we can have access there so that we can do fishing, because we do believe that there are fishes there, then the money can be invested to the municipalities so that we can do fishing in those dams, irrigation dams. And the other thing, umaspalati avunyelu, no mama, access imichlaba engasebenzio for indoors recycling. Not a dumping site this time around, but it places where we can do recycling. And the municipality, if they can be allowed to access land, this time not for dumping, but for recycling activities. Thank you. Greetings to everyone here. My name is Msiyanda Boni. What six, Ape Addo? What six here in Addo? Most of the times, we always complain about our municipality. I just want to take the opportunity to thank them for what they have done. We did have some success, which indicates that there is some work done. I accept that, I mean, when you look back, Addo was one of the dirty places, dirtiest places, but now things have changed as we speak. Also, when the information is distributed, I would like to make a request that it's done properly, because we do have many young people who would have been here today. Chairperson, I would have been glad if the stakeholders, those that we usually go to, to ask for assistance, the rich ones, I would have been glad if they were here also. And about fifty percent of the youth here, they work in farms, it would also be good if those rich farmers would have been here so that they can see what is taking place. I support this bill. Thank you. Greetings. I would like to thank the government and everyone who has come here to listen to our complaints here in Addo. So in all the things that are taking place, starting from the municipality all the way up to government, what I would like to ask, I would like to request if we can start with us?
Benzo utakala, ukusele, clanmete besesbeki we ezinyezezindo, eh, ezomoya, u, 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 ezothuto, ezamanz, njalonzal. Benzo utikalanga, kala apa kuti, kasesi kala pa kuti, kukolendo kutwala luchisoli ngumgum.
So, some of the matters have been covered, like when it comes to air, when it comes to transportation and water. But now, when I say, let's start with us, there is something called when the people are burning rubbish.
Maspala we to ayesi se kudi, ati wosugoltila sasbame intanganiso. Unyen, na kani sasnikese lis kala zo zetu, kuhulumende, kuhulumende utate u one two three four five. Ogunye, ngadiso pinapinda.
I would be glad if the government could come and give us the report, or at least the municipality. Because I know that the government people are busy, they may not be able to do that. But if they can take the report back to the municipality, and then the municipality can call us and say on such and such a date, then we had a meeting and now give us as to what was decided upon those suggestions.
I thank you.
Yeah, Bule.
Eh, mandes bulsele nam.
Greetings to everyone.
Kusosonge iskeba se parlamente estes afikelela apenwe ba namshanje.
The whole parliamentary committee that has arrived in.
Bulise cheperson ne iskeba sake.
And greet the cheperson and the committee.
Na kume ya we tu, ne cabinet ya ke.
And our mayor and the cabinet.
Na kubashalibonge abalapa.
And all the community members.
Tis bulsele, yuti namu, ya mkele kulesoloja, na namshanje.
I also accept the bill.
Eh, mnake, ti ngoku duelngone, bongani. Mama wat eight pe nolitando.
Kamala mngoku duelngone, paga eight enolitando.
Eh, namu, man kali ndigulele, pa kume ya ne iskeba sake, kabe teba kwa zusondeza. Amalu ngwe parlamente apaguti.
Let me thank the mayor and also the council for bringing the parliament closer to us.
Kubakalukes nyisindo beskati sisbona, escreme.
Some of the things we used to see them on TV.
Ya tanda genkandi glamdu tando tetas trey di nomdu dimchongile ndimboni. When zelbayi zindo endis out in this group, as tate, as taterin male.
I like talking to someone face to face, so that the person can take notice of what I'm saying.
Eh, ogoka la, namu, ti sanonge apa kumaspaala apa kwe cleaning. Dine ndo, nditeela ndoba nangaba esoloja, likasengas.
I'm also working in the municipality, in the cleaning, and there are some things that I thought this bill can also give support to.
Kubakala ngapambili, ansakumbuli gobuponyaka kota pa, go two thousand and ten eleven. Beske sacha manza mnyama.
Mnyama la black.
Eh, we amanza nga tanomsiisi, olngoliseku.
Well, I can't remember well, but back then around twenty ten, twenty eleven, we did mention that water is becoming black duck?
Yes. And ya temba genkuku pana, ite la sonde, la esoloja. No ko, sawane temba indoba nangaba, izindo, sawkwenziwa, senzeke.
So we're hoping that then when this bill is implemented, things will start to shape up.
Bakaluku, ya tanda indoba nangaba, ba fike abandu, ba zo beka iztembi, so iztembi so zingenzeki. Titikemnake, ma kwenziwe, kwenzeke, ubakaluku sihlala, ebumtake.
Usually people come here and make promises and don't fulfill them, but now what I'm saying, make promises and fulfill them, because our place is dirty.
Titelu kolo ke, kanzau nyatela kwezinye izkababes nyatelo. Kodwa ke, pana klawa ti amenolitando, sine dumping is nda atupayana, estela indoba nangaba. Esoloja, linsanenomaspaala, kwasuwa, kubayiku kwasuwa kisikobo, zukuti zipeli seza dumping.
Well, I'll apologize for repeating what others have already said, because there inolitando were three dumping sites. And I'm hoping that this bill will be able now to assist so that we can get rid of those dumping places.
Di mensina zona ke, jen ubandengumshali pasi, ninsina lapetangose benza kuzo. Se tetindoba nangaba, ma be kwezikoobo izaneleyo, izkwasu kuti zipeli seza dumping. Kubati ina, zikona, ubumta kesna kwasu fikerela kuboko, kubakaluku, zifuna ikikoobo, izkwasu ikalando zubeka apo.
I'm saying this now as one of the residents, because I know there are others that we cannot even reach to. And we know that we would need some special tools to be able to deal with those dumping sites.
Eh, man bulela, nados ninsibenza, tetabenza ma, uzo posa, ezisindo, singapambi.
I don't have much, thank you.
Diabulisanga linzaasa.
Greetings this morning.
Ebekmelbas ya konza ngayo.
We're supposed to be in church. But Chawe decided to call us. You have a senior.
Mnake, dingonominise, Makuleni.
I'm nominise Makuleni.
Nguati unoni utikela uyongo se untrwiba. Diabulishe, kwe parlamente.
Greetings to the parliament.
Diabulishe, kuta baneskeba sake.
Greetings to councillors.
Diabulishe kubashali base Addo.
In the residence of Addo.
Diabulishe nabashali beznyindaw, ba namjungwe beznyindaw.
I'm also coming from other places.
Tis ukaga word forty-four itinach.
I'm from word forty-four, Yutinek.
Ne gu trwai karieha.
They call it karieha.
Hake na paku nze kainbe fana nolitobo kwa trwai karieha. Ngena yoke bizwa kwa banda batile, aba yaza bani, as a result kapumeli kamelti karieha.
Now, this is how it happens, because there were other people who were not from there, who got there, and then they gave it a name as karieha.
Kolutea devet.
The gospel.
Omnandi funa oguti parlamente, i climate change, i kana kulisuelonje. Indo eti, i awareness fungasbe konna, inga kumbitsina banngoma masitkane kaka kulu. Ngobaba ye nibe chubabuya, benge namisebenzi, sishieke na banduana aba fundayo. Indo mbuzanake, ikunduwa ngabuzwa inga namgenzekiguyu. Ayi kogwa ma liyoktena lo miqamilo genkuku, fungushalinala lo mdana. Lea nditima sbeke, i awareness, sibeno yazi indoba, abando, enyindo singo mama, singabona banu kandova. Ute omiusisi.
Makendi mame, makendi mame. So, I thank you, I thank you for this matter of climate change, because we understand that it's a worldwide problem. Now, which, the people that suffer a lot is their women, because they carry a lot of first responsibilities in their family. Our husbands, because of this, they lose jobs. And now what is happening, we also have girls, and our girls sometimes would have their children, we can't even have money to support the grandchildren.
Me tinga chokyo. Ni kamele, kalu, kavso itetava, oh, ayma, imama nte. Sanitaripets, tedazo. Oh, ogoku unye, ogoku unye, ditima kbeke i awarenesses, kaloku nditilendo, itkana kakuliti nabo mama. Ngoba kukua banda basemzinigoga, ba zo pangela apo, na bo bebe ktingba, i climate change, i ngono kultala, ba zo kfuna apa amalshelwalshaz.
And now that's why we also suffer as women, because now there's people coming from other people, other places, looking for cleaner pastures, and thinking that maybe the matter of climate change is not that bad on our side.
So genkuku, aba bafana, ba kangelega ngati ba skilled, na bafana balapa. Ba ye kwa ngunga bafana balapa, kufunu aba banga panze.
They end up now looking as if they are more skilled than our sons, and now they end up taking, giving attention to those that are coming from outside.
Kanti ke, kutebeleneke, kuza ba kwinzanesi za awareness, sishieke latina ba makulu, ko basmasino ba uzoti, kriza ma ndoni akondu yaziyo.
And then we end up now with grandchildren, and we can't give them a specific clan name, kriza ma or ndoni.
So ndiza ma, oguti o mama, ba yafune naabo, u empower reju.
We need to empower women also.
Ngobakaluku, ne we da, itchinjaga ifon, gimin, kubese psika, kubese tlokien, kubese kwinla, kubese intagoshlas.
In one day, you have all the four seasons.
Indo eti ke, nguna lamshlaba, buklubufuma na kuo izindo, ba kasi ngoma manokos ya kwasu kuzamen, ba tis mroko nglo mlap.
And now even the soil that you use to grow some plants in it, and now there's nothing. And as women, we know how to look after ourselves, but now the disappointment comes from the soil.
Asiyazi ke, no ba ke, isho, i konna, imi tetu, eh, ya implementwayo pamkwe tu, esasau landela. No ba naninize na le yen, wa ye genkuku, as kwasu pikisa ndo, lenza nsetela singa balshali ndoba. Kaske ni buya, nisitela ba one two, upasile, u five seven, na kwa kwenzeke.
We can't reject this one that you are bringing, because there were others that were passed. Eh, that's why we're now asking you, if you could please come and repose, beg to us that five and seven, we cannot be able to do.
Diabulela, ke tatu cha.
Thank you, Chawe.
Ngozka kulu, tigele.
Thank you, tigele, mgwati.
Yavana pasno bizana ngetu, awani waso kageka banda.
Once we start using these clan names, some other people will be confused.
Bakona banya bati, itu kozetu, zema pepe.
Someone said we're reading our clan names from the paper. That person doesn't even have a clan name.
Tinas nono, numatsi pepe, nsko.
Our is on the paper, we're better.
Eh, me right?
You still okay?
Zavontet?
You still wanna talk?
Ay, oh, ningali, ningali, ningali.
Don't fight.
Ningali. Ah, we asbona tina.
Are you looking at us, yeah?
We can see there.
Singashalapa tin.
You can speak all of you.
Tatenonke.
Scheisen guseve.
And leave here at seven.
Asichahanga.
We not in a hurry.
Asin da.
Not, we're not going anywhere.
Ma klanisiti na ni right, ay si right.
When you say you're okay, then we're fine.
Agreed?
Niya vuma?
Nilambi.
Are you hungry?
Or benisiti, siema kaya siyo, ke aspindes buye.
Or should we go home, eat, and come back?
Hey, anti ni tembingam, ni na ne soze buye.
I don't trust you, you may not come back.
Okay, that's fine, I think we must, we must call that a rap.
Masikoku mbeleke ngoku.
Are we agreed?
Siavu melana?
Eh, guvage.
Everything was clear?
Chief, what is the hand for?
Si paga melaneso sanjapo.
What is the hand for? Ufunu teta ngbe bill.
You want to talk about the bill?
Okay, Rose, are we fine? Good. All right, I lose, I lose.
There's no reason to fight.
Arloha, ne geru are democratic institution.
Singabanbe democrats.
Utatuzo palapants. Eh, he'll be attended properly, he'll make those significant inputs of his.
Uza osanesa bombo mazingche, anazo.
Yeah, eh, all the views here are very important to us, Major.
Isballege ya kulin ndu nisete apa namshanje?
Yeah, uti wele nochilis, ochilis ama attendo.
Oh, unkunye nochilis pa uzamu.
Okay.
Night.
Now, we, I want to assure you that all the views that have been expressed here are significant to us as a committee.
Man kunseki, suva zonki mbono zenu namshanje, isballege ilekile committee.
Eh, they are not only important to us as a committee, they are also important eh, for an institution that makes laws for the Republic of this country.
Isballege na kwezik, o elenzi mi tetu, kwe lizwa, isballege anganjeku tiku pela.
This is not a tick box exercise.
Eh, kogxulisantusana kunina.
Eh, we, we can't tick box from, we are almost on the verge of the Eastern Cape this side. We can't start where the Eastern Cape started in Mata Dela and see the upper just to tick box.
As, as inauza, sisuka nga, pema tajela sofika, pangase kpele ngwe Eastern Cape, kande so kretisantusana kunina kpele.
This is a legislative process that we have to undertake.
Nkubule, esmilesi landele yo wisomteto.
So all those views that you've raised here, we are going to meet at the right time, consolidate them, and make a final piece of legislation that might eventually become a law of the country, and it will be binding on all of us.
Es mbono benisbelisa apa sautibana, ekashilfanelekleyo, wenzo umteto wiswayo, ziben ngumteto omisela kwe lizo, obopelela, wonge umtu.
But Honorable Mbata is going to tell us what is going to happen after these consultations.
Obegigilembata, uza staleba, mvien kubana kutkeye, wonge lendo, kobo yoku fakane mi lomo, kuza kwenzeke antoni.
I have requested that the office of the speaker should be emailed this document.
Titililuba i office ikasom lomo, itunyelenge email olkripu olu.
And that all world committees, Honorable Speaker, must have copies of this document.
Zonke i committee zo wa, difuneka sbenaye kopi.
Baba vumeleni, bavumeleni nampa eh, isolo eh, emtanzane.
They agreed emtanzane?
That when a young man is going to speak to a young girl, he's going to say climate change.
U twaka umfane sao tangelela pa ndo mbini, uza utikayete.
Ufati klayete.
Ati climate change.
Yeah, now, kuza kwenzeke apo na se ato.
Kuta na lape ato, basa kwenza londo abafana.
Yeah, pa ufiganjehu ti climate change.
Ta ufigu mfa ndo mbini, sa ti climate change.
Na ni ke, ta besi ti climate change, ni vum?
Ni vume, ke ni ba vume.
Nzo, ndu ba ba ibambi la ba banda.
Nisa chonias ba ba ibambi lenke.
Bakabili. Yeah, so, so the, the people must read this document, get to understand where we come from, what do we recommend, and what do we think should be done.
Abandu funeka balfu ndolkripu, babo nindu esnonyelo ayo, nesindu kfuneka senzeki.
It is there, it is here, ipila naati.
Ila pa, ipila naati, it's here.
You have seen it there in Port Saint Jones.
In bonile eh, Port Saint Jones?
You have seen the floods in Kwasulu Natal last year.
Inisbonlis kukula, nyakopele kwasulu Natal.
I'm sure you see what is happening in Mexico.
Nisa imbona nedenze kaya ngoku in Mexico.
It, i ko onalend.
Mnake, koye, this problem exists.
One councillor there in Mata Dela made an example, Majoro.
Omnyo utaybapaya ne Mata Dela, wense umseke.
And he says to us, when, when we had problems of HIV and AIDS, eh, we responded through AR, ARVs.
Asasne ngake HIV, ne AIDS, siya sapendula nghe ARVs.
But climate change, my, we might not have ARVs for climate change.
Seno ngabinazoke, ARVs is climate, zo chinjole mozulu.
So this bill will enable all the stakeholders, including government, to be able to respond to the effects of climate change.
Lomteto kilo ake ngoku, uza unaitra bonke, ukano kuhlumende, abenengeela yoksabela, apagolchinjole mozulu.
The inputs of the NPOs are very important to us, all the non-governmental organizations too.
Isballege le in eloesevela kwe NPOs, na wembo utoe ngakongapanso kuhulumende, isballege le kuti.
Because this thing does not choose, abantu bakaluhulumendu bohotwa, it affects all of us.
This thing affects all of us, it doesn't only affect the people from the government.
Na loa sekuneni, it affects him, does not matter who he is.
And the one on my right also affects, doesn't matter who he is.
And the one on the right, ya fan, na lo, ya ngakul left, ma ngapachongaka.
If you look well, even the one on the left.
Ba yafana ne.
Do they look alike?
Ngatbatoki. They are not concentrating, let's move, let's move.
Abasfanga, masandin.
All right, Honorable Mbata, what do we do from here?
Obegigilembata, what sense anjanu ya pambili.
Thank you, Chair.
Bulela slalo.
Eh, I would like to greet the cheperson.
Bulisuslalo.
Eh, the mayor and the speaker.
No somlomo.
My colleagues from parliament.
No tabambe, sugana de parlamente.
Our staff from parliament, including the VIP protection.
Nabobo kusegeke.
And the most important guests, which are you here, the community members.
Indu ndu esballegeleyo, ezinini ke bashali.
Eh, firstly, I would like to thank you all for taking your time, especially on a Sunday eh, morning to come and sit with us here.
Man din buleleke ngokbalapa, ngetawa, ksa sa, nesoba kwenye naati apa.
I think as the committee, we have listened to all your inputs.
Tenge committee siya sazpu la pulisimbo zenu.
Then the, the Department of eh, Forestry, eh, Fisheries and Environment.
Nisabe leza mashati, lezo kloba, nenndalues mongileyo.
Will respond to the issues raised at the public hearing.
Sisake sisa deleke, ngoku lemi bandeli apakaniswa, kwezintangansozka wonge wonge.
The committee, our committee, which is the Committee of eh, Forestry, Fisheries and Environment, will deliberate on the contents of the bill.
The committee ye tu, yeza mashati, lezo kloba, nenndalues mongileyo, isa oshala, ke shafunisi seke, ngoku, ogoku, apakulomteto yiloyo.
Taking into account eh, both written and oral submissions.
Isa ochonge, sbes tetu, ngomlo mezindo, ichonge nezi asipaliwayo.
Oh, let me just eh, highlight this, the written submissions are still open until end of May.
Man ita zekele, ezbalwayo ne ngapala ngoku, uyochong, kasekpele nikuka mayi.
And all your written submissions must be submitted through the Office of our Product Follow Secretary, eh, Chileka.
Ezindes palueke, funeka zye pa kala office ikano pala we tu, Chileka.
Eh, uza nega emaili ake, I think it's Madubeka.
She will give you her email address?
Tmadubela at eh, parliament.gov.za.
Tmadumela at parliament.
Madubela.
Madubela at parliament.gov.za.
Bati konakla mat documents.
You do have it in those brochures?
So make sure that you, those who didn't come can still come, can still have their input through the written submission.
Singakela ke na bo bebe ngeko apa, ba ibase ngapala na bezabi zinfo.
Eh, the bill again will be referred eh, the, once the, the, the committee has drafted and adopted a report and debate eh, in the National Assembly.
Asaleke ngoku, ki committee ye yaiila lena elo, ya se kwa otwa ngayo pa kui luyo kazu, kazuelonke.
Subsequently, the bill will be referred to the NCOP.
Isa wamba ke, lomteto kilo ayeye kwe NCOP.
To embark on their legislative processes.
Guanjoyo ngeki ngoku langobo ya wisomteto.
Thereafter, thereafter, the bill eh, will be sent to the president to consider, assent and signed into law.
Isa osuka ge ngomonga meli, ay kualasele, ay vume, ay chaobele ibengomteto.
After that, the regulations will be then gazetted for consultation and input considered before the act becomes eh, enforceable.
Apamba ke lomteto nyanzeliswe, uza utala, utala okaze, tewelo mimi selu ilapo, uzi swegenkuku ba oku kualasele.
Again, let me appreciate the public for, for their sacrifice eh, eh, and sacrifice and their precious time to attend this public hearing.
Kwakona nbanba ngasbin, nikubashal, ba be yeban ngamitshalabo, ba bakona klenintangansozka wonge wonge.
And we have something smaller yana that we will give them as a snack.
We've got something smaller yana, thingesa, ni fanchenjendu esua, pansku mbo mbo.
And I think eh, the people that are going to control it, it's the, our VIPs there at the back, but to start from the, the first rows going backwards.
Abandaba saela ulake, ngaba bame pangasemva, kodaki za utala, pa kulumta wokala, yi ambeki ngokiye pangasemva.
First rows, both sides.
Isa oma nisenge, injeku matalo ma bi ne kuka wokala.
And then eh, let's eh, allow the elders and the disabled people to go first.
Sa utala ke ngabantu, abakulile na bakubazekeleyo.
Inkos, diabule.
Thank you, thank you.
Realebuka, meme Mbata. Realebuka, meme Mbata.
Realebuka, meme Mbata.
Realebuka, meme Mbata.
Ngacho, ke. Membata.
Gererealebuka ndati.
Titin diabule.
Oh, wangul.
Ti ngoku fakakul.
Enwa zatoli. Vunandi di amma zenetoh.
Yes.
Mazenetoh.
Realebuka.
We, ay kengo, ay, de wieka. All right, eh, Executive Mayor, thank you very much.
Si bulele kwe sotolofu.
Thank you very much, eh, Honorable Speaker.
Somlomo ekileyo.
All the councillors that you came with here today.
No tribo zena, ba namshanje.
Eh, the MM and your directors that are here.
Na balawlba kabalapa.
Eh, we really appreciate your being here, the people of eh, Sunday's River and the nearing towns.
Si bulele na bandu base Sunday's River, netolope zigfuchane.
Eh, people of Pa'i.
Bandu base Pa'i.
Zuite.
Eh, zuite.
Eh, tinach.
Eh, tinach.
Eh, which other one is here?
Ye ipika neyelap.
Motherwell, people of Motherwell are here.
Motherwell.
Yes, nesipivut.
What other places?
Addo, oh no, Addo is here, yeah, no, thank you very much eh, ngakuti sawamba na TV eh, tungo.
Now the problem, we're gonna take our TV away.
Because bezino, bezizo nishia naayo.
We would love to leave it here.
Ey, ne ngaske ni kageze.
Ah, you'll break it.
Sawamba na i TV eh.
So we'll take our TV along.
Eh. Diakengoba kuza opunyo ngalamnye ngochilis.
I think Chelis will use that door?
Honorable Mbata makes a request that we must afford an opportunity to the elders.
Obegigilembata, beklele sikale, sikitu baba ndabase bekulile.
And people with disabilities.
Na banda bakubazekeleyo.
Bakale bafuma nuku ukiapa.
They must eat first.
So I suggest that we take the last row, go out, and then these ones would be the last.
Ndi timna ma la, la row yokabela, makale yona, ababala pa pambili, benga bo kabela.
O puti ma kalepi. Ogukalele.
This one first?
Either way, you are, all of us are going to get.
Sa ufuma na so, ke nobaku you are going to pick on.
I lose, I lose, ma kaleapa pambi.
We start here from the front.
Ngakuti, bendite, kutkalepa, emva, ngoku, kokomplena apa, ngoku, nza utukaleapa komplena apa ya. Ah, ayasato likingo, eh, ukyanga mi na TV ngati ngatrinu ngoku. Bendifunu sleba ngoku, ngoku, bandu balai, South Africa, basaski bandiwe ngoku. Right, no, thank you very much, and the meeting is closed, thank you very much.